Circulate the memo that we put out before regarding zoning matters. And again, this isn't a city of Topeka City Council. This is a state law that we're in Supreme Court rulings that we're responding to. But I'd be happy to circulate that and we can have a discussion again.
Mrs. Everhart.
Yeah, I guess I, my only comment is it, I, when you look at that language, no additional hearings, I mean, that's pretty clear. It doesn't mean people, people are, will contact us, we know that. They'll send emails and we refer them. So they're not prohibited. But if we, I think to get back to what you originally said, if we start conducting hearings, we have to be careful that we're noticing both sides and we're bringing all the people up here. And then we wouldn't be able to do that when just one party's here. We'd have to, I guess, defer the zoning matter to a later date and have a whole hearing. So I, I think we need to be careful when we're talking about hearings as opposed to hearing from people. Communication is going to come to us, but it's whether we're going to, if we're going to do the same whole process the Planning Commission does, then we have to be very careful we follow all the legal steps.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? I think there's one more here on five-five of public comment, speaking of comments.
This would be line four ninety-nine through five twenty-eight. There's really no, what I would consider substantive changes to this, we just, which I think is good, separated into our general public comment and comment on specific issues. So, and that's specifically on line five seventeen through five twenty-eight. Anybody have any questions about that that I?
With the, and, and again, it's, you, you took out the section pertaining to the limitation of four minutes, but that's in the other.
Yes.
That's another place.
That's in section nine point two.
Where we talked about that. Okay, yes. Mrs. Heller.
I had just one on there. I mean, you can see all the strikeouts on what was handed out, but basically what the staff was proposing was said that comments on line five-ten and five-eleven, comments pertaining to personnel litigation and ordinance violations shall not be allowed. When I read that, I might not have thought about the same context that the city attorney did, but most of the people that come up for public comment at the end of the meeting want to talk about something that they think isn't right about some city ordinance or the way that we enforced it or didn't enforce it or something like that. So I felt like we, we should not, I, I'm fine with saying that you can't talk about personnel or litigation issues, but it seemed to me that we should not exclude talking about ordinances from public comment. So it was just a matter of deleting one word.
Do you want to give any background?
If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, it's our old language, I'm looking at lines five-eleven through five-fifteen, our old language is violation of laws and ordinances are excluded from the agenda shall not be allowed. We just switched where ordinance was. So it's the same, if I'm reading that correctly, it's the same language. It's just a stylistic change. Because we, you have violation of ordinances, criminal ordinances within the city that are, but we separate those from our state laws. So it's covering two different subjects, but it's just switching stylistically where ordinance lies in the sentence.
My point is that I was just sort of looking at it with fresh eyes and, and if somebody comes and says they have a problem with the way we're doing code enforcement, they're talking about our ordinance. Or if they come and say they didn't like getting their car ticketed there and they thought it was unreasonable or whatever it is they want to talk about, they're always talk, almost always talking about some ordinance that we have. And so even though it was in there before, it, it, it didn't, it seemed like we should take it out. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on, we're leaving section five.
Entering section six.
All right, section six, Rules of Order.
Begins on page twenty-six. And goes to page thirty-three and it's line numbers five-thirty-nine to six-ninety-six. There's lots of, there's lots of crossouts and strikeouts here. What we attempted to do is to make it real clear what kinds of motions and orders we have, or the motions we have. As, as a matter of course, everything that we do, since I've been here has been debatable. We've debated the amendments, the substitutions to refer to strike. So it's just removing the debatable and not debatable because we debated everything. And we clarify the difference between a substitute and an amendment, which is on lines five-ninety-two through six-seventeen. Because sometimes that question comes up, should I amend this, should I substitute it? So being real clear, amendment is if you want to make, it's the same thought, but you just want to make a small change to it and you have to get the permission of the motion maker and the person that seconded. A substitute is going to be substantially different than the original motion, doesn't require permission of the motion maker and the set, and the second.
And that is a sort of a, a change from our current practice and probably we haven't been following our own rules very well. So if you all agree this is the way it will be, we'll try to see that there is that difference. We have to understand the difference between an amendment and a substitute motion. And I think it probably would be helpful if we did make that difference to, so we're, we're, we're together on what type of a motion we're, we're really we're moving and voting on.
That, my observation has been that we, we essentially have three motions that we hear over and over. We defer, we substitute, and we amend. Those seem to cover the majority of what we have and we have to fall back to Roberts' rules if there's something that we want to do that is not specific.
Mrs. Schwartz, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, this kind of goes back to the question that when I served in the legislature, we had friendly amendments, which with the, you know, the person sponsoring it and then the second would agree, is that still okay to do or not?
I would consider our amendments our friendly amendments. Our amendments, you need permission of the maker and the second. So sometimes we hear people say, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, I'd like to make an amendment. In practice, they're the same thing, but.
Thank you.
No unfriendly amendments will be allowed. All right. Any other questions, comments on, is that on taking care of section six? Is there?
I don't, I'm, I'm trying to keep.
Yes.
Are there other things you have in section six?
No, I, those were the substantive changes, but if there's specific things that council would like to discuss, I'd be happy to discuss.
All right. Mrs. Heller, you had one?
I had just one, and that was on calling the question. And.
Where is that?
It is on page thirty-two and it starts at, depending on how you count, I guess line In the type that's, that remains in the, in the staff version, calling the question, discussion and debate of the original motion may be continued between members, the city council and city manager until the question is called. When I read that, it sounded like you had to call the question before you voted on anything. And I wasn't sure we wanted to add that. And in fact, when I looked, when I read it again, I wasn't sure that the sentence was needed at all. And so in, in the proposal you have for me, it just deletes that. And then as you continue, it says a call for the question if seconded. To me, it didn't matter whether it was an original motion or any motion. It might be an amendment, it might be a substitute motion, that what we should say is a call for the question on any motion if seconded, and then you just keep on, but strike original in the places where it says original, so that you're simply dealing with any motion that somebody thinks you need to, to see discussion on. And then I would also suggest in line six-seventy-seven, where it says, the call of the question shall not be implemented until all members of the council have had an opportunity to speak to the motion, which is good because it makes sure that if somehow everybody hasn't had a chance to speak, that everybody gets to speak at least once. But sometimes if there is really extent, if there's been a lot of discussion and new points have been raised, people might have changed their position or feel like they wanted to submit something before it was wrapped up. So my suggestion was to insert, and all points or positions are, are allowed to be stated at least once, so that the chair then could say, does anyone have anything new to add? Yes or no? That has, that happens briefly and then the question is called. I've seen that happen where it would have clarified to, to let the, the group go around if people had new information before the vote actually occurred. So that was just a suggestion there, simplify a little bit, certainly make sure that we don't have to call the question on every motion.
All right. You had. The, just to clarify, pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight deal with disposing of a matter with affirmative or negative action. So we have to approve, to disapprove, to request, to direct. That's your, you have an ordinance, you have a motion to approve. Under, call the question on page thirty-two, subsection J will be titled, calling the question. So it's specific to that issue of calling the question and ending debate immediately by two-thirds vote. So they're different. Calling the question is different by its definition and how it's defined in here than we have in a motion to approve, to disapprove, to request or to direct.
Okay, so that, I think that may be what the difference is that Councilman Heller is referring to.
I'm not sure I followed that.
On lines five-seventy-five, five-seventy-six through five-eighty, we have to dispose of a matter with affirmative or negative action. In order to dispose of a matter with affirmative or negative action by council, after such matter has been presented and discussed, the following motion shall be in order: to approve, to disapprove, to request or to direct. So when you have a matter that's in front of the council and you want to approve the ordinance, you want to disapprove the ordinance, that's how that is handled. Calling the question is specific. It'll be its own subsection. As you have a substitute, you have an amendment, or you can call the question, that ends the debate. That is not calling the question of an ordinance in terms of do you approve or disapprove of it. It's, you're calling for the vote at that point. And it's defined as calling the question, has a specific definition in this section. So they're completely different concepts.
If everybody else gets it, I see some puzzled faces.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shall we go to another question, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, that yea or nay votes are completely different. This only applies if somebody actually does call the question. My, my question, and hopefully you can explain this to me, is if, if somebody does call the question, if we're debating a measure and there has been a substitute motion or an amendment to that measure, this refers to the original motion. So can you not call on the current motion? If, if I'm, if I'm using a debate or stalling tactic in, you know, and we've got an amendment on the floor for consideration, it would seem to me that you can't call the question on the amendment, you can only call the question on the original. And I wonder if it wouldn't be easier or clearer, or maybe I'm completely wrong, which is very possible, to, to change original to current.
We can clarify that language so it's, it's clear of what we're calling the question on. And again, if that's, these are your rules, so if, no problem doing that, so we can clarify that.
Okay. So maybe there's something that you will work on some language and we can see, and it may be an up or down vote on, on which way it goes. Are there other comments on section six?
Moving on to section seven, which begins on page thirty-three, line seven hundred through seven-ninety-five, which is the top of page thirty-eight. The, the first one, seven-oh-two and seven-oh-three, ordinance and resolution shall be presented to the council only in printed or typewritten form, is eliminated. Funding, all ordinance authorized expenditure of money shall include the exact source of funds. That's handled in our NOVUS program, so when something's put on, NOVUS, which is the program that we use to put items on the agenda, requires you to have a funding, how much funds are going to be expended before it allows it to be placed on the agenda. So the rule isn't necessary because our system, we can't put anything on the agenda until we've identified a funding source or what the funding is for it. And then line seven-fourteen through seven-seventeen, the, removes the five-day rule to reflect current practice. When we put noise ordinances, different things on the agenda, we, we haven't been following that five-day rule, so that would reflect our current practice. Line seven-thirty-three through seven-thirty-six, again, our NOVUS process requires the approval of the city attorney. And then line seven-forty-six through seven-fifty-one reflects the elimination of the first reading, as does the seven-point-two changes. And then line seven-eighty-four, ordinance passage, those procedures are governed by KSA twelve-dash-three-zero-zero-three. So when we stop, is anyone, we're covering a lot here. Yeah. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you. I have a, just a question on, I know we took out six-ninety-five recesses. So can the mayor, I mean, can we just go into recess and the mayor declares that, or how do we handle recesses now?
The mayor and, Mary.
The mayor has the inherent authority to call for a recess and any one of you could make a motion to recess, so.
So there was no problem in taking that out?
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
Or that's under Roberts' Rules of Order, or just a chair has, or it's the chair.
That's true. Roberts' rule gives you implied powers as the presiding officer to call recesses.
Okay.
And then.
What do you think? We'll keep, let's keep going.
I had a follow-up question.
Yes, Mrs. Schwartz.
Yes. On the funding, is, are you saying then that that would take out the, on the, on the agenda, what the fiscal impact is?
No.
It will always be on the agenda because we use NOVUS?
Yes, it will always be there.
And so as long as we always use NOVUS, the funding will be there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Schmidt?
What if we don't use NOVUS?
Then it wouldn't be there. And again, if you want to leave it in there, it's fine. It's just that we've, we use that program, you're always going to have a funding issue there. But yeah, if we're not, I don't know what other program we would use. But yes, there's the possibility.
Smart kids out there, they might come up with a better one.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't harm anything to leave it in there, does it?
No. Leave it in. Did you have other items on section seven?
No.
Mrs. Heller, did you have a?
I do.
You have, you have some, don't you?
I do. And really, I mean, they've taken out whatever it is, twelve or fifteen sections, so I only have concerns about three. I agree with Councilman Schmidt about the funding. For one thing, we might not always have NOVUS. For another thing, we don't see those documents and the information about the funding doesn't come through in our, in our council attachments for us or for the public, necessarily everything. And, and I think that's very important. In fact, I think we need to expand that. And so you can see in the document I handed out, I, I think that they should, there should be companion fiscal notes on everything that comes through to us and that, and it should identify any fiscal impact, which could include sources of funds to be expended or existing sources affected. I mean, if we're going to take a position that's already funded, if, if we're going to do something that appears just administrative, but it's going to take a, half a person's time, obviously, it's, there's cost there and we're giving up something that that individual was doing before. I think, I think having a fiscal note on all items is a really good management tool for the city manager and the staff, but I think it's also very telling and helpful to us. So I, I would very much like to see the fiscal note stay. I was, I wondered why in seven-point-one, the language that in the past was very simple, but said that the.
Could you say where you are, line number?
New seven-point-one, which is line seven-ten to seven-twelve, used to be very simple and say that ordinance and resolutions and other documents should be prepared, prepared by the city attorney if requested by the city manager, the mayor, or any council member. And that's a tremendous resource to us, and I would like to see the language allowing the mayor and any council member to request assistance from legal remain. There is some language elsewhere that lets us get advice, but to be able to have assistance in drafting a proposal or an amendment is very important, and I think that's the only place that language is in here. So I, I'd like to see that stay. The only other item I had was in, there were some deletions in the old section six that, that were, let me see here. The staff was proposing that we delete item, the old item, six-point-three-C and six-point-seven-C, which says that, puts that five days in that, that we just talked about, that says that we can't vote on an item the same day, that we have to wait five days. I understand the issue of the noise exceptions and letting people have alcohol on the street or something like that. But overall, I think we need that five-day requirement. So I would propose that we put as, as a seven-point-two, in, in this seven-point-two series, that we, we put back that language that says the council may consider, but not vote on any ordinance or resolution unless it has been distributed to the council at least five days prior to a meeting. I think it's critical for all of us, just to make good decisions, plus public notice. But I do understand the, the issues we have faced, so I propose that we put an exception in there, that items with no administrative impact and a fiscal impact under five thousand dollars may be passed the same day, which would allow us that exception that we've been making. We simply haven't been challenged by anything bigger than that because it was our council rule, but we would not consider anything major that was brand-new. And I don't want to lose that.
And these are defined in the handout you provided?
Yes.
Under seven-one, seven-one new B, seven-two new A. So the council members can look at those to see if we want to go with those.
And the easiest way to read any of the ones that I did are just to put them side by side with, with this one in the notebook. Because to, to amend an amended thing was too crazy. It didn't make any sense, and so I just rewrote them.
We're, yeah, section seven yet. Mrs. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Karen, with Councilman Heller. We want to be a transparent government, and if it looks like we're not, we're able to vote on something without any public notice, that is not transparency. So I would agree with Councilmember Heller.
Mrs. Everhart.
Thank you. I think that, just for clarification, I, I don't have any problem with that and I, I certainly want to make sure that the public's well aware of everything we do, but where does emergency things or things like if you require the five-day, the noise exceptions? You know, when somebody.
That would be in this exception.
Okay.
So that would be accepted. If there's no administrative impact and it's under five thousand bucks, we can do it.
Okay. So I, I guess I just would want to make sure I had clarification because sometimes if you're requiring a fiscal note on everything, who prepares the fiscal note?
In my view, the fiscal note would not have to be very involved. If there's no fiscal impact, you could say that.
But how would I know that? I, I mean, if you're ma, I mean, I'm thinking about resolutions that I brought. For, for example, the ordinance with the, you know, to allow the monkey thing. I don't know if code enforc, you know, if there was going, I mean, you have to think about, you know, if you're talking about every resolution and every ordinance, I mean, who decides whether there's a fiscal impact under five thousand? I mean, should, do we need to refer this always to budget? I'm just asking the question to make sure. If you, if you want to put that, if you put that language in, then that, I don't want to, I guess, prevent any city council member from bringing something forward because they didn't, you know, go to budget or someplace else and get, you know, that fiscal information. So I just, we just need to be careful what we're, make sure we're, we're doing that, I guess.
I think that's a good point. If, if we do retain the language that we talked about a little earlier, that they each have to be stamped by the city attorney's office, that, that being that central point before anything would go forward, that, you know, those routines would be there and, and people would know. And we certainly have the right to draft resolutions and ordinances, hopefully continue to, as well as to, through the city manager or his delegation, ask for assistance if there's a need to know whether or not there's a fiscal note or how to put a dollar value on it. So we should, yeah, shouldn't be too hard, but we don't want not reference of.
Other, other questions, comments on section seven? Moving on to section eight, committees.
Starts on.
Page thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight, lines seven-ninety-six through one-thousand-twelve, lines eight-forty-nine through eight-sixty-four. Duties and powers of committee. Committee change to reflect the practice of allowing the committee chair and members to pull an item into committee. So if there's an item the chair wants to pull into the committee, he or she can do that instead of it coming from the, just specifically from the council. Line eight-seventy, line eight-seventy-three through eight-seventy-eight, the change would be, the item shall be placed on the council agenda. Either sixty days or, or on a council agenda, it eliminates the next available agenda. Line nine-oh-two eliminates the two readings. And then we also allow the chair to establish rules and procedures, which appears to be how we've been operating, so it's just a reflection of current practice.
Mr. Schmidt?
I had a revision that I would like to have considered on, I guess it would be eight-point-seven, starts at line nine-fifty-one or page forty-four. We talk about the, currently it says, alternate members of committees, if a member of a committee cannot be present at a meeting, an alternate may be appointed and serve at that meeting with full voting rights. The alternate shall be appointed in the following order of priority. And then it gives the absent committee member, the committee chair, and the deputy mayor. I, I like the idea, you know, and this is a, this is a practice on the, the JDO board where you're allowed to, to appoint a proxy if you're not going to be able to attend the meeting. What I don't like about this section is that it doesn't say that. What I don't like about this section is that it doesn't say that the alternate has to be an elected official. And I would like to add in there that the alternate or the proxy has to be another council member.
That's very good. All right. Other, we're on Section 8 committees. Mrs. Schwartz?
Thank you. The Section 8, too, on the standing committees, have we covered that yet?
What line number?
Well, I'm on 814.
It's line 804?
Yeah, right, yeah. Line, standing committees. I guess, and this is just for food for thought, it says every year, has there been any discussion as to appointing committee members every two years so that you fill out a term? It seems to me that doing this every year, if you did it every two years, you'd fill out the terms until an election would happen, so that we wouldn't have to appoint committee members every year. That's just food for thought.
Interesting. Mr. Schmidt?
I have another proposal for consideration on that, and I would love feedback on this, because it may get shot down, probably will get shot down. But the idea that we have to have three members on these committees, I think, has become somewhat of a problem, because every time any committee member talks to one another, they have to notice that discussion up to discuss any members. I would consider creating committees of five members of the council, which would allow you to communicate with one other member of the committee on issues or to discuss with some, you know, with the public, other issues coming before that committee, without having to notice everything, without having to notice up before you send an email asking a question or anything like that. I think it can be kind of cumbersome, but I am open to any and all criticism.
Deputy Mayor?
I like the three, and I also, I'm going to go back a little further. I like the three members. It's kind of hard to have five when you're working. It's even kind of hard to get three people together when you're still working and those that are not. So I kind of like the three. And I also like, oh, gosh, train of thought, that we switch committees. You don't have to switch committees. You can ask to be on that committee again. But I kind of like that. Me being here nine years, I've kind of sat on every committee but the finance committee. But it gives that person the opportunity to be placed where they really, really want to be placed, you know? And I like the Public Health and Safe Committee. So if we start switching them around, you might not get that opportunity to serve on the guest transit or different other committees, because you'll be stuck for two years. That's just my thought, but thank you.
I can add a point as from the, and similarly, I served on the Transit Guest Tax Committee for four years. And by about the third year, I understood pretty much the transit guest. And so, you know, there is value to that. And the other item is, I think, I hear you, but the point, we probably would only be able to have maybe two committees, because right now in appointing, it's hard to get people, we have to have, people have to be on three committees, and it's hard, you know, it's, there's a lot of time. That's another, it's an either-or. I hear what you're saying, and I know in other, some other councils from my work, some have larger committees than we do. Now, you give up some things in the process. Yeah?
I completely understand that hesitation, and it would be hard to get five people together. Now, you would only need three for a quorum, which is the same thing that you need now. I mean, it would be essentially the same as now with three members of a committee. I just think it would provide, it would provide a better avenue for discussion and participation if we had, you know, the ability to talk to other committee members.
Yeah, we might have that put together, and we'll put it up, run it up the poll, see how, see how the vote is.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hiller?
I have two real short ones, and then an idea that the former city attorney had on yours. The short ones are on line 835, where it talks about the three committees of the whole, and says the mayor shall serve as a non-voting advisory member of the budget committee. Well, we have always had the mayor serve as a non-voting advisory committee of all of our committees of the whole, not just that one. And it seemed to me that we should just amend that slightly and just say that the mayor would serve as the, as a non-voting advisory member of all committees of the whole.
Are you meaning of all committees? Of all...
Of all council standing committees.
That's right. That's what I'm trying to say.
Rather than limit it just to the budget. There's language in my handout, but I just, and then later in 8, Section 8.10, on line
What line?
Line 993. It's on page 46. The section talks about keeping minutes of the meetings of committees. And it says, "Minutes shall be reviewed and approved by," the proposal says, "would be reviewed and approved by the committee at the next meeting." Most of the committees meet rarely. It is, it's hard to get them together. Once a committee's work is done, you would have to convene a committee meeting just to approve the minutes. And I think that that's onerous, especially since our rules elsewhere say they all have to be on TV. So I was suggesting for your consideration that we instead just say, "Minutes shall be kept of each meeting and shall be reviewed and approved by the committee. Before the presentation to the council, such approval may be electronic or verbal." Because what we did, for instance, with the Economic and Community Development Committee, was we'd have Ginny send the minutes out to everybody. People were supposed to look them over, let Ginny know if there was anything wrong. And if they were fine, they went forward. And to me, that's plain, you know, or if somebody wanted, so somebody could either email back or phone and say, "Yeah, they're fine." Or if we needed to amend them, we could just take care of it.
Any other comments on Section 8? Mrs. Schwartz?
Another food for thought that may be shot down. I guess my first question is on, it's on 814, 1010, line 1010, television coverage. How many other cities our size or in Kansas televise their committee meetings? That's my question. And I don't know when this was decided to be done, but I know that Ginny's always having to try to schedule the staff and the cameras to do that. And I would just like to know how many other cities actually televise their committee meetings? The council meeting, I can understand, but you can read the minutes and public can comment and that type of thing. So I would just have the question of how many cities televise their committee meetings? Thank you.
And maybe we put that to a vote. And that might be that we televise committee meetings.
There's a, I think there's a specific resolution requiring...
Right. Yeah. That would be in the, there would have to be a, there is a resolution that we do it. So that would have to take that. Yeah, Mr. Complis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Councilwoman Schwartz. Do you want to broadcast it live? Is that your question? Or, because we currently do record them and they're posted online.
Well, I guess that, in answer to your question, it's the use of the staff time and the use of the equipment. What, I mean, if it gets to be an expense, I guess my question relates to, is there a chance that we don't have to have them televised?
Okay.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, there is a budgetary impact to having them televised.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, we actually broadcast them live.
Yeah, we do. Yeah. And the other things, there are only two general rooms that can be used, and there are, I know from being in this building, that there are logistics that we have to, that are, that we have to meet, yes.
Do we know viewership? Do we know how many people watch those committee meetings? Can we determine what the viewership is?
I think we have the communications director approaching, who is going to give us a specific number.
Thank you.
I can say not many. I don't actually have a specific number. We could find out. I did want to, I was thinking back there as I was listening to the conversation, there's a difference between broadcasting them live and televising them. We could always record them, and we could do, we obviously broadcast them live now, so we're fully capable of that. But that does limit us to the rooms. So we could record any meeting and play it back an hour later, the next day, anything you guys would like. But that is, that would be considerably less tedious than going through the, you know, we can only do it in the ECR and the first floor.
Yeah. And I suppose that's probably what our resolution says, that we broadcast live, and then so that's, we'd have to have a change of resolution.
We do now put the committee meetings on the web, too.
Okay. All right. Section 8 committees completing. We're ready. And for those in the audience, this is the last section, Section 9, Citizen Input.
Line numbers 1015 through 1044, starts on page 47. The one that I wanted to point out to you was lines 1038 through 1042. We eliminated written communication, because in this day and age, you're all receiving emails, phone calls, but usually emails. So this may address the council by written communication regards to any matter. I don't think we need that anymore. You're all receiving emails and different types of communications. So I don't know why we govern it to written. And that would be the end of my presentation.
That is the end of his presentation. Are there questions, comments on Section 9, Citizen Input? Mrs. Hiller?
It's going back, it's going back to the television. I would like to see them, just the pre-recording taped, taped, and then replayed. And I am one of them that does watch them. If I can't get to something that I want to know about, I will watch them. And citizens in my district, they do watch them, because they're scared to come out at night, or they can't get to the committee meetings. So they do rely on that. But I think we could do it with just recording them and rerunning them. I think that would, that would be great, and that would save us a lot of time and effort. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mrs. Hiller, you had something on Section 9?
I did. And they're in my packet. But on Section 9.1, that starts at 1017, line 1017, on page 47, we really don't follow the practice that is in here. And I felt like we should adjust the language to reflect what we actually do, which I saw as, "Each person addressing the council shall step up to the microphone, state the person's name in an audible tone or voice for the record. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof." That's the protocol we've had. But there have been times when the chair has allowed responses or conversation. And because of that, I felt like we should say, standard practice shall be that questions and discussions are not allowed. That gives the chair some backup. "Any questions asked by the person addressing the council or by council members or any discussion shall be allowed at the sole discretion of the meeting chair and shall be handled through the meeting chair." That's what we have done. And there's been, you know, the reason that's happened is because, obviously, the chair or people on the council felt compelled to go ahead and address that issue at the time. So it seemed like we might as well have what we do, just to suggest that. I talked earlier about going ahead and getting rid of that earlier section, and then 9.2, about what people say in the meetings, the personal and slanderous remarks that starts on line 1027, to combine that with that earlier section and make a new Section 10 that just applied to how everyone in the whole room should behave. And then, I really thought that leaving the written communication in was a good idea, and to add a companion section that invited verbal communication as well. Maybe it goes without saying, and we don't need to have it in there. Obviously, it doesn't all have to go through the city clerk anymore. I get that. But I really liked having a section that said that interested parties or their representatives could contact the council through written communication. And I felt like we could also have, or I would suggest that we have a corresponding one on verbal, that says interested parties could try and address the council by verbal And identify, again, I think the staff was trying to get the responsibility out of the city clerk's office, but, and you didn't want to read it all verbatim, you've got my copy there, but to indicate that if people called and left a phone message, a verbal message with the city clerk's office or the council staff, that it would be forwarded to us. I felt like that would help all the other departments know that they didn't have to take messages, because sometimes people will call street, or they'll call HND, or they'll call who knows where. But that would, that would make it clear who trunks those communications if they do come in.
Other comments on Section 9? Mr. Complis?
I do want to backtrack just a little. A common thread in the Government Review Committee, especially comments coming from the public, is that the mayor play a larger role in formulating the budget and also even potentially chairing the budget committee. I'm just curious for what some of my colleagues, what's their take on budget and how you feel? Should we keep it with the deputy mayor? Do you think that maybe the budget should be headed by the mayor?
I would like to see that kept with the deputy mayor. And the reason why is because when you become deputy mayor, it all changes. Everything changes from being in his position or chairing the meetings or whatever, and it gives you some type of comfort level. And what's the deputy mayor going to do if you start taking all of their jobs, what are their duties? What are they going to do? And that, to me, is kind of seeming like what we're going to do, what we're doing is when we start taking away and giving it to the mayor. But I just found I was able to chair the budget meeting because I, and the one meeting that I did get to chair, it was easier to me because I had practice and kind of felt through it. So I just say leave that with the deputy mayor. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Anyone else?
And I think, and actually, some of these, where the Citizens Review Committee is looking at it, my suggestion is that we wait and see what their recommendations are, and we will have that opportunity. The council will have that opportunity to review all their recommendations and take care of them at that time. I can tell by the glazed look over on the audience how exciting this has been. Legal, do you want to give us a process, the process that we will use, the next steps going forward? For instance, we have in here a clean draft proposal, which in a sense would be the resolution attached to the clean draft, and then we would entertain amendments that have been discussed tonight, or you would have language for some?
We've taken notes. I think we will prepare language. There were things that were clear that I think the body was in favor of, and we will make those changes. And then it will be presented in a clean copy. It doesn't have to have a first reading, but it has to be considered at a meeting. And then there will be a vote the following meeting. And if there are things that people want to add as amendments at that time, things that want to change, we can clearly do that as you would any other ordinance or resolution.
Okay. Okay. And this is on for first reading next week?
It's on for first consideration, I guess we'll call it next week.
I'm sorry, for first consideration next week, and then the following week, be the fifteenth, is when it will be an action item, as using that phrase. All right? Council members, any questions, thoughts, conclusions? We will then move on to the next item of applications, and I don't believe there are any, so we will proceed to first readings.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section eighteen fifty zero fifty of the Topeka municipal code by providing for certain changes in zoning of property located along the west side of Southwest Indian Hills Road, approximately thirteen hundred feet south of Southwest Twenty-First Street, from PUD Plan Unit Development District M1 Use Group to R1 Single Family Dwelling District, first reading.
Thank you. We will proceed to the presentations. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I have none.
I'm sorry, you had, you had none?
None.
Okay. Mr. Man Speaker? Mrs. Schwartz? Mr. Schmidt? Rules that regulate, rules and procedures did it to us. Mrs. Heller?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'll, I'll make it fast, but I, we got financial statements for December thirty-first and the new ones for January from our new financial administrator, and I just wanted to comment publicly that I love them. I, I really like the format, and I, I certainly like the year-end balances, too. Perhaps you're going to have it on an agenda, but.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I'm fifty.
In two weeks, we have a presentation.
Wonderful. Most of us were involved in at least one of the events for Mars to welcome the Mars Company and, and open their plant this week. It was wonderful, and I'm just so impressed with what a class organization they are to the person. It was really an incredible experience, and the pop-up store still has run out of all Topeka items, so they're supposed to get a new shipment on Thursday. If anybody missed out and wants Topeka-only items, they're only open for two weeks. I also attended today the announcement at Stormont Vale that they have entered into a major frontline strategic partnership with the Mayo Clinic. That is huge for Topeka, and I am so proud of them and of our city for this development. Last but not least, Suzie, or whoever else was involved, I loved the zoo release today about our prospective tiger baby and the April Fool. Thank you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would most definitely like to welcome Mars to Topeka. You are very much part of our family. It was pretty awesome to see all the Snicker bars fall into the boxes. We are done with winter, hopefully. Let's knock on some wood. And I would like to extend the invitation to everyone for the first Friday this summer, or excuse me, this, this week for spring. So hopefully, we have some good weather. And also for those who are in North Topeka and Oakland, the HND process, where are we at? There you are, has started, so if you have a home within the two target areas, both in North Topeka and Oakland, please reach out to HND or to the council office. You're more than welcome to email me or call me on my cell, and we'll make sure that you get a packet to be considered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Ortiz?
Well, I, too, want to welcome Mars. We made national news yesterday morning, and that was awesome. I kind of wish they knew how to say Topeka correctly, but they got the point. I had a couple of family members out west in California call me, and they thought that was really, really awesome. They are first class, and I would just like to publicly thank them for choosing us, for being here. I'm excited. And the night of the dinner, I had so many people come up to me and thank me for their job. They said they're going to retire there, and they are just excited, and that made me feel good with the vote in the hand that I had and playing with that. So I think we're very lucky, lucky to have them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Everhart. Mrs. Del Eastbach?
Just wanted to say thank you to the people, the great people over at Lykan Foster. We had a wonderful meeting. I would encourage everybody that's in the area to participate in the upcoming meetings. If they have any questions, they could get in touch with Mr. Shay Foley. And we also had Rosanna from HND talk about Next Door. It was a wonderful activity. Then finally, I did want to congratulate an organization that is doing a lot in our community, in addition to Mars, of course. Thank you so much there in my district. I'm extremely proud to have them over there. And I wanted to say happy birthday as a nonprofit to the Silverbacks. I know that although he will not say a lot of things about it, Mr. Man Speaker was an integral part of getting that group of volunteers out there doing wonderful things in our community. And Jude Quinn is just a fantastic exempli, exemplification of what a great Topeka resident is. We're very happy to have them in our community and doing the great things that they're doing.
Thank you. We have two persons who signed up for public comment tonight. The first is Jerry Morgan. Mr. Morgan? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council people. I didn't think I'd ever be back up here, but due to the situation, we've run into a parking problem on the fourteen-hundred block of Lane recently. We probably will not cease to be there much longer if this continues. The Pizza Hub Pub employees are now parking on the east side of the Lane Street. That's one of the things that's happening. And the clubhouse has a number of meetings on Saturday. That is happening now, and events. And number three is the parking on east side of Lane. No cars are using on the east side, only on the west side there. And four has been an increase in business of our shop and the Pizza Hut. Been a tremendous increase. We also see a problem with the patrons going to the Pizza Hut. They park on the west side, they jaywalk across the center of Lane, busy traffic throughout the day, mainly at noon, later in the afternoon, and it is very, very dangerous in that area for them. And to solve this problem, I exercised my rights a while back, and I had the curb painted in front of my bike shop. And I have four, four spaces that were painted, and it said Jerry's Bike Shop, Parking Only. And to provide a little of the reasons why I believe I had a right to do that, I'm going to give you the history and provide that, and I don't think probably too many understand or that, so I'd like to pass that out, and that'll pretty well answer everything. Everyone should have that. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to see some kind of markings put back in front of my bike shop. Otherwise, I will not have any place to do business any longer. It's just a matter, there's a lot of business going on in that area. The Pizza Hut Pub has a lot of cars coming in. Our business for the month of March has increased two hundred and eighty-two percent over last year, and we haven't even gotten to the spring yet, where people pull out their lawnmowers and bring their bicycles in. So if that happens, and people will park on the east side of Lane and start pulling their bicycles and trying to drag them across the street of Lane, we got another problem. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. So that's basically all I'm saying. I'm giving you the information why I think that I had a right to paint the curb, and that's basically it. And I think we need to do something with the, with the parking. I noticed down on Sixteenth Street where the businesses are, they put up signs that say a quarter hour parking. Maybe north and south of my bike shop, we should have that also. I don't know. It's something for the city to consider.
Okay, thank you. And, and actually, you're Jerry's Bike Shop, is, you didn't state that specifically, but, and I know we will have the Public Works Department and others look into this.
That would be.
We're going to have to take a break because we will have to change the tape. So the chair exercises his prerogatory, and we're going to have a recess for, let's make it for like four minutes at the most, because I think they can change the tape that quickly, and then we can have our second public comment. They're, they're out of time, so.
That's fine. I'm, I'm finished.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
And we're now in recess. Is Mr. Gonzalez here? The second person who has signed up is, is Leonard Gonzalez. He is not here. Then that case, we will say that, that's right, we are having an executive session. So we will take a recess, actually, so the, the audience may leave. There will be no action taken in the executive session. So we'll have a recess at this point in, in the council meeting.